Recording is in progress. In here that.
I'll call the North Smithfield School Committee meeting of Tuesday, June 20th, 2023 to order. Please call the roll.
Chair Lombardi.
Present.
This is Mia. Here. Mr. Conal.
Here.
Mrs. Fata.
Here.
Mrs. Farmoli.
Here.
We have five presidents. We have a quorum moving on to the pleasure of the ladies.
The flag of the United States of America into a republic for which stands one nation under God and the principle of the vision of justice for all.
Right. Is there anybody here for public comment or community comment? Superintendent? No one answered. Okay, hearing none. I'm going to move the agenda around unless there's an objection to item four, one, which would be personnel resignations, retirement leaves of that leave of absences and appointments. So superintendent?
I would just like to highlight a few items, a few people on this list, and I'm sure there are people here who would like to get up and say other things. First of all, Kim Bruno, Jeff Macari, Kellen McGann resigning, I wish them certainly the best in their their future endeavors. Matthew Tech. So number of people were confused because they heard that Matt Tech resigned and they thought he resigned from the district, but they were very happy to, not happy to know, he resigned just only as AD, but he's still with us doing a phenomenal job in the district. He's been with us for eighteen, twenty years, eighteen of which as our athletic director. During that time, our sports programs have grown. We have all but four inter-scholastic teams right now, and it has been an amazing run with this man at the helm. His patience, his professionalism. One of the things that always impresses me is that he has always approached our athletes, not just as athletes, but as the entire individual, academic, social, emotional, attendance, behavior, every aspect of it, and it just happens that they were also participating in sports as athletes. But, you know, we can very large shoes to fill. In fact, we're cap, we're going to have to look for somebody with a who who has much, much more time to devote and learn the job, but Matt will be around and he will be able to be a mentor and assist a new person into the role to be just as successful as he wants. So congratulations and enjoy the time after school, evenings and weekends with your family. So and we can circle back if if other people have things to say, but I also want to highlight Kim Ross and Tracy Lefrenia. Our new assistant principals for the high school and the elementary school. And this is one of the things that I am always thrilled when some of our best teachers decide to go into administration. But then the fear is that they will be taken away from us from some other district that may have an opening. And it just turns out that we have two of our best teachers just finished their administration program as positions opened, and we couldn't be more happy to keep them here with us at North Smithfield. And then also I want to highlight Rachel Salvatore, who is unfortunately leaving us. She is going to her home community at Johnston to do good. Moving over to the high school and it's a it's a mission that is dear to her heart. They had a lot of turnover and a lot of instability at Johnston High School, and she wants to be that anchoring presence as well as explore some different horizons. So that that's my piece to say, I think Jen, did you, yeah, Jen, Jen would like to say a few words. Oh, and some of the families that just arrived after all the nice, most of the nice things were said.
Hi, everybody. And so when Rachel approached me right after April vacation to let me know that the town of Johnston had approached her to apply for the assistant principal position. And after she had had our conversations with Claire and Mike, I asked Mike if I could just say a few words about her. And then as I was kind of going through and trying to write something that kind of encapsulates what Rachel was to this district, I realized that it was best summed up in the letter that I wrote for her recommendation for the National Outstanding Principal of the Year, Assistant Principal of the Year, as well as her letter of recommendation for Johnston. So I'm just going to read that. I I do want it to be highlighted, the incredible mark that she's left on this district over the past five years. So Rachel came to North Smithfield after a twenty year tenure in Providence where she served as a talented educator and administrator. For the 2018-2019 school year, she was assistant principal at Halliwell in its final year. As the primary administrator for the building, Rachel was responsible for organizing the packing of classrooms, managing the delivery of materials to the other school buildings over the summer and distributing staff and equipment equitably. Rachel handled it handled it all with a dedication and grace that is rarely seen. Since 2019, Rachel has served as the assistant principal with Mia and SES. In the first year we were together, we opened a new wing of a building, became the only elementary school in the district, and pivoted to virtual instruction when COVID struck. Rachel was instrumental in it all. When COVID closed our school, Rachel did not stop. She immediately shifted her focus to mobilizing our resources to support our students. Whether it was coming to school to print and pass out packets or driving to students' houses to deliver Chromebooks and to do wellness checks. Rachel's commitment to our community during this time was steadfast. She scheduled virtual lunch date lunch dates with our students, recorded nightly bedtime stories for our families, and participated in a multitude of community-driven events to help everyone feel connected. Rachel kept pulse on the emotional well-being of our staff through car rides to staff's houses and virtual check-ins. While most people had time at home during the early days of the pandemic, Rachel did not. She came to school multiple times a week and on weekends to ensure that teaching and learning occurred. Since returning to school, Rachel continued to be an advocate for our entire school community. The demographics in our change are in our town are rapidly shifting. Rachel drew from her experience in Providence to offer all of our teachers support in how to best meet our students' new changing needs. She was instrumental in the adoption of a progress monitoring tool, meeting with teachers and interventionists frequently to find out which one would provide the most accurate data to help drive our instruction. In addition, Rachel has met with multiple educators to use this data to identify learning targets and develop heterogeneous groupings, a needed shift at our school. I could really go on with the many programmatic shifts and new procedures created since Rachel joined our community. However, I feel the most important reason Rachel should just be recognized is her generous heart. This truly encapsulates everything that Rachel stands for and believes in. She'll often say, I feel it in my heart, or my heart is happy, when referring to something that moves her, which is daily. Rachel lets her heart guide her, and it has never steered her work wrong in a decision to help make our school better. Whether it was spending time in a restorative conversation between two third graders, chairing an IEP meeting, and ensuring the plan is specific to the students' needs, or simply checking in on a staff member who is struggling, Rachel's heart is the reason we were as successful as we were. It is also the reason why she's moving on to Johnston where I know she is going to make a change. So I just wanted that to be known. The one other thing that I had to share is, and I don't know how often this is, you have Claire to thank for all of us growing up in North Smithfield, becoming teachers and then becoming administrators. She has some sort of like magic on us. But one of the things that Rachel did say in Tracy's letter of recommendation to get this position is that she is a life, Tracy is a lifelong learner and regularly seeks opportunities for professional growth. She continuously facilitates research-based professional development for our teachers and is often found sharing resources with our staff. She is a highly respected by her colleagues, a reflective practitioner, and as a result, her actions are always informed and justified. She takes the whole child into account and flourishingly meets their needs academically, socially, and emotionally. She is extremely well-loved by our students. Her calm, caring way and ability to form relationships with students, staff, and families is such an asset to our school community. She plays a critical role in creating a climate hospitable to education. So I don't feel like Tracy is a replacement. I feel like she's just an additional add-on to what we've already established. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I may, Mr. Tech, thank you. We appreciate all the hard work you gave us over the years. You've done an outstanding job. Salvatore, who I don't believe is here, I want to thank her for all of her time, and I want to congratulate Ms. Ross and Ms. Lefrenia. Thank you for stepping up to the plate and good luck.
Matt, saying thank you is just not enough. There's just no way we can thank you for your dedication and all the hard work that you've done, and I I hope you realize how much it really is in that particular. So thank you very, very much. And I would just like to say about Kim and Tracy, not only were they teachers, but they started off as students in this community, and they went from students to teachers to administrators, and I think that's a compliment to the quality of our school system, and it makes me very, very proud, and I congratulate both of you because I think you're doing excellent, excellent job. So thank you very much for stepping up, as Jim said. And as far as Rachel's concerned, what can I say? Because I I worked so well with her in the wellness committee, and I will miss her terribly, but I'm excited for her and for new opportunities. But she also will leave a big hole here in North Smithfield. But Tracy will do a wonderful job filling that hole, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Really not much more to add than what's already been said in terms of, I agree with it. Just going on the list real quick, because again, we have had a long relationship with a lot of these folks, and some are leaving and some are moving on. I mean, moving on. Mr. Tech, again, I've always enjoyed working with you and appreciate the work you did, and I just know that okay, and I can know when the tennis team, how often you'd come out to the tennis matches and you were there for the kids, and that's, you know, that's one sport. So I I'd seen you at other events a lot, so you really come out to the events that I was talking to the president this morning, and that's probably the part, the single thing I meant most about you as an athletic director is how you always out there, it made the rounds at a lot of the events we do. And so you know, still here and well, upward and onward, right? And with Ms. Salvatore, again, I always thought she was a rock star, and sorry to see her go, but understandable. You know, teacher of the year, and also going back to your hometown also has a certain appeal, that's very understandable. And as far as Mr. Ross and Ms. Lefrenia, who I've both known for a long time, you know, I'm really excited to see them in these positions. I think they're both going to do great jobs. And Ms. Lefrenia and I see each other a whole lot, but and the family, but we live right across the street from each other. And I didn't say anything, I didn't even, I didn't know if this was public. I I knew it was two days ago, but I didn't know if it was published or not. But it's, again, even though we lose, people have taken on new roles, I just think it's really upward and onward that. I feel really good about the district and where we're at, even with these changes, with like with these changes.
I'll just say, Mr. Tech, so much less paper. Because I think you're going to like that part of her retirement. And Ms. Lefrenia and Ms. Ross, and I mean, if anything, I'm like, oh, my gosh, now who's going to take over the history and those kinds of things? But I can't wait to see the teamwork that you're all able to create and just see where North Smithfield goes. So excited for our district. Thank you, and thank you to Ms. Salvatore.
I would like to just thank Matt and Rachel and just everybody for all their hard work. I haven't really worked with you for that long, but I remember when you came on, my kids were in high school, and so it's been quite a while. And the same with Tracy and Kim. I've known Kim quite a long time, and Tracy, I think I was subbing as a teacher assistant when I first met you. So congratulations to both of you.
Thank you. Moving, so let me take all of four on right now. It's for informational purposes only. Does anybody have any questions? That's item four. I don't know, you can ask.
It's the new band director here. She is Olivia, Olivia's not here. Okay, so Olivia is replacing John Canasis. She gained very highly recommended, just knocked it out of the park at her interview, and we're looking forward to her starting with us in September.
Does anybody else want to speak on four? Okay, hearing none, we can move on. And again, for the record, thank you and congratulations again. Now folks have to go out and get ice cream and dinner. This would be a good time if you would like to. All right, moving. Let's see if there's an objection. We could move to item item eleven. No, sorry, item five. Yeah. Six. A discussion with Jeff Porter regarding Halliwell Review Commission Committee. So, Mr. Porter, thank you for coming. You are the chairman of the committee.
I am.
Okay, and you emailed, I don't know if it was all of us or at least me, asking, yeah, asking to come in, do a presentation, which we really appreciate.
Yeah.
So take it, take it from here.
All right, great. Well, again, thank you for having me. As you said, my name is Jeff Porter. I am the chairman of the Halliwell Review Committee. I'm also vice chairman of the planning board as well, so my visit here is a little bit of a twofold tonight. One of the things is we are beginning with the Halliwell Review Committee, our master planning process, and we're really talking to all groups and committees in town to figure out who would have a vested interest in the Halliwell property. And we're really working to get all of our building blocks or puzzle pieces, however you want to put it, out on the table. So then that way we can start to really work with our architect and identify needs and address those needs in town and and kind of work with all those cards. Last week, we we met with the the youth rec league, sports rec leagues, Little League, North Smithfield Express. We had comments from Northland Hoops, the youth soccer association. So we're really just reaching out to everybody because we're really at a pivotal point where we're gathering as much information as we can. One of our tasks as the Halliwell Review Committee that we were given from the town council was to make sure that we're reviewing all of the town's documentation. So that includes the town's comprehensive plan. Our town's comprehensive plan was recently, well, not recently, but passed in 2019, and by Rhode Island general law, we're required to update it every five years. So we're coming up on that five-year mark. So the numbers and projected school enrollment that we had listed in the comp plan, you know, for the elementary school, we have the capacity listed in the comp plan at six hundred and six, the middle school at five hundred and fifty, and the high school at six hundred and seventy-two. So at some of our joint meetings with town council, we have heard that we may need a new school at some point in the near future. We may not, we may, but based off the numbers, you know, that we were reviewing on the school's website for the New England School Development Council, we were looking at those projection numbers and understand, trying to figure out an understanding of, okay, is there going to be a need for a class, another school or not? So I figured rather than trying to decipher all the numbers myself, what better place to come than to the experts? Rather than hearing it from hearsay from various people amongst the public, oh, we need a school, we don't need a school, we just built a school. What do we need another school for? That sort of thing. So really, it's just to kind of get it out on the table. If, one, if we do need a school, does the committee and the administration feel the need to have a school down at the Halliwell property? I know we have a nice little campus up here, down here on the southern portion of town with the elementary school, middle school, and high school, all located within five minutes of each other. And then to have how the Halliwell property, another, you know, fifteen-minute ride, depending if you hit the lights right or not. So that's kind of where we are right now. So I, it's just more to open it up for discussion here from your folks. If you you're thinking that, yes, we're definitely going to need a school, I'm not going to hold you to it. But it's good for our planning purposes, both for Halliwell and the planning board, because we want to get, not only do we want to take this information that we get tonight from you folks in this discussion, but I want to take that to the planning board as well. So then when we do start revising our comp plan next year, we have already had the conversation a little bit, or at least have begun the conversation. One of the things that we're really pushing for is a collaboration amongst all all committees in town. Too too often, we have found that there's too many silos. So we're trying to break up some of those silos so then that we can have this discussion and really both in in the Halliwell Review Committee and the planning board, really just making sure that we're touching base with every committee, every group that's in town, because your say is just as important as what we're doing on the planning board, and we're not going to be dictating what everyone's going to be doing in town. We want to hear what everybody wants to, how they want to move forward as as the town progresses. Because we're, you know, we're obviously sometimes, depending on who you ask, we're growing. Somebody might say, we're straight date. So, you know, there's, there's the numbers, numbers don't lie. I I'm an architect by trade, so I I tend to look at numbers pretty easily. But then when you're looking at projected enrollment, you guys know those numbers better than I do, and I I fully expect that there might be some nuances here, that there's pluses or minuses when you come into those those numbers in projection. So I'm just, as I said, I'm just trying to make sure that we're working with accurate information and also hearing from from the committee and the administration of really where where you folks see yourself going the next ten, fifteen years, because as we're doing this master plan for Howl, that's probably about the length of time that we're looking at right now. So with that said, I will certainly like love to hear from you folks. I I tend to say that I talk too much, and I like to let other people talk, and and then I just do the listing, so.
So how in detail do you want to go tonight versus a separate meeting? I have some numbers I can share and some concerns of your.
So share them now, and then you can build up an open communication. Jeff, you're invited back anytime you'd like.
I appreciate that, thank you.
So you want to give him what you think is going on right now?
So it's a little, little chart I put together this morning, and I've been looking at these numbers, the the development council projections and and such. So right now, we have finished the year, and NSCS is going to be, I think, the pressure point. All right, we finished the year with about five hundred and ninety students at NSCS. We're anticipating a similar amount of students at NSCS next year. We are looking at right now, it looks quite likely we're going to have to open up another kindergarten class, which we had not anticipated. And we're looking very closely at grade one and grade two. We may have to open up a grade one class and a grade two class. Again, not anticipated, we didn't put this in the budget. We'll know better as the summer goes on and as enrollments continue to come in. But then just looking at the space at NSCS, you had mentioned in the figure that you were using with six hundred and six students as the capacity, that, which I believe that was the original capacity. We had an architectural firm, SMMA, did a a review of our facilities as part of a master plan. The number I have from them is five eighty as for NSCS. Now, that was before the additions. All right, so and five eighty as could comfortably fit at NSCS. Doesn't mean we can't put more, and that's probably where the six of six came from. If you add the four room addition, now we're up to another hundred students, so it's probably about six hundred and eighty would be the capacity for NSCS. We're coming up to six hundred. We still have a ways to go before we hit that six eighty. And within that, right now, I think I I talked to Mrs. Dado, and we could probably free up about another four classrooms at NSCS. And what that would mean is that some of our interventionists or special education or student support folk would have to move into smaller spaces or share. So there is still some room to create classrooms now. Where I'm really concerned is there is a a drive for universal preschool for 2028. We have two classrooms for preschool. We have four preschool classes, AM and PF. If, and again, I don't know how aspirational this is versus if there will be funding behind it or mandates. If we had a full, if we had to do full day PK, which maybe would be wonderful, we could not fit it in NSCS. So it would very quickly outgrow the building. So and again, that that time is 2028. I have no more information than that, other than it's an aspirational goal from the federal and state governments. As far as the middle school, you mentioned five fifty, and that that is the number. We have, we closed out the middle school this year with five hundred and two, so forty-eight extra seats or spaces. And as you're right, there's more nuance to it than just a count. We're having a decrease at the middle school, and that's why for next year, we had reduced the amount of teens at the middle school. We anticipate the middle school will remain that five hundred or below over the next few years until that early elementary bubble hits fifth grade, sixth grade, and then, you know, seven and eight. So we still have space at the middle school. The, and there there are other areas that we could carve off if we ever needed more classroom space. One of the things that this building has a double-sized, very large tech ed room. If need be, we could cut that in half. Not ideal. Again, tech ed requires space. We have a multi-function presentation room off the library. In a pinch, that could become a classroom. The special ed offices are located in this building. That used to be a classroom. Right, so there there's still a couple of areas that in a pinch, we can move things around and get extra space. The high school. The high school next year, we finished this year with five hundred and fourteen students. We anticipate at least five hundred and fifty-one next year because we've had a very large eighth grade, became ninth grade. We also have a a very rapidly growing CTE program in which we have more students coming into career and technical programs in North Smithfield High School than we have students leaving. So it's, it's, it's a growing area. So and at the high school, I school the spaces are a little bit. high school, the spaces are, are a little bit more complicated in that it really depends on the programs and the pathways for the specialty areas that you would need for that. So, and the high school has some specialty spaces. They have a cardio room, which could become a small classroom if it was ever, you know, needed to be pushed, pushed into service. We, we have a media production lab, all right? That could be a classroom. Oh yeah, a, a music tech lab. So again, there's dedicated spaces for dedicated courses and programs and pathways. But right now, I, I don't see the high school as becoming overcrowded. It's really NSCS and it's based on, a lot of families are moving in with children. And NSCS is a fantastic school. We're actually getting students coming in from the charter schools, returning back to North Smithfield through elementary. And it really comes down to though, it will be tight there. It is a ridiculously large enrollment for an elementary school. The administration, the teachers have done a nice job of trying to keep it, you know, community based and in schools within a school. But it's that universal pre-K for 2028. That is going to be the, a, a breaking point for NSCS.
All of that information is true.
I even wrote it down.
I'll send you that thing, that's a fun.
So then, with all of that being said, and our, my previous boss liked to say, if we only had a crystal ball, would we anticipate that there is going to be a need for a school come 2028? You can, you can say, I don't know. We might, we might not. I'm not going to hold you to a hard answer. Because I'm not, I know I'm putting you on the spot.
If there were to be another facility come 2028 with a universal preschool, my recommendation from this point would be an early childhood center.
Okay.
Superintendent, can you just go over the developments? Although Mr. Porter probably knows as, as well, that are going on in, in the town.
Neighborhood Works. Neighborhood Works and Narragansett Improvement.
Those are two currently, I believe, the Narragansett Improvement Project, that was just in front of the planning board asking for a two-year extension. So they have two years to come back to the planning board. Legally, that's all I'm about, I'm all, all I'm going to be able to say. So if you have any further discussion, you can come to the public meeting when that's brought up. But just, I do know that, that one. And then I believe Neighborhood Works has not been in front of the planning board, but I believe they do have to come because of the change of use of building. And there's a few other checkmarks that they have to go through with that process, but they have not been in front of us yet. So.
But his projects do bring in families with quite a few children.
Certainly.
And we furnished to the New England Development Council a listing of all of these real estate development projects, apartment house conversions and, and so on. And we periodic, we, we update that every year to the Development Council, which, which they factor that into their projections. But I certainly would welcome digging into this deeper with the planning board, with yourself and, and really just drill down into all of this, as well as geomat this, you know, so that when we're looking at new families, when we're looking at age groups, we can plot it across the town to see if something belongs up at the other end of town versus trying to keep it all within a, a, a local campus setting.
Sure. I, I know that just based off some of the projects that have been in front of the planning board, that the majority in the Suedeville area are going to be retirement age facilities. Silver Pines, there's the, the first project. It's phase one, it's, it's been since completed for a while. There is also a phase two. And there's also another assistive living facility that has been in front of the planning board. So there, the age demographic up towards northern part of town might be a little higher than school age.
But the, the thing too is that I've also discovered with North Smithfield, people like to live here all their life and then retire here. So I would anticipate some people of retirement ages with large houses moving into one of the retirement communities. But then now we have a, a house which is ripe for a family to move in. Yeah. So.
Yeah, I, I am, I am guilty of being one of those people in process. My wife and I were the first class to go through the elementary school when it first opened. And I was fortunate enough to go to both the elementary school, Kendall Dean, Howell. Not this building because it wasn't built yet. The, the high school. And I'm fortunate enough to now have a, a son that's just completed first grade. So it was great to be able to go in the building and see how it has expanded since my second grade years. With all the additions that have been since put on. So there, there's, as I said, there's a lot of the, and you, and you pointed out, there, there's a lot of dynamics at play of how, not only the Howell property is going to flush out in this master planning process, but essentially the entire town as well. So, so I'm going to go back to the, your, your recommendation of the early childhood center. Because, you know, we aren't looking at community based space down at the Howell property. And maybe, and this is probably more from my own education, is how could an early childhood center like that be kind of folded into a community center? If there's activities for senior citizens, if there's a library or, you know, flexible space that's going to become, you know, three gymnasiums that can be worked over and be made into a, into a function hall at night. So is, are there ways, I understand that security is always going to be a concern. But are there restrictions that we should be aware of that wouldn't allow the mixing of those groups? Or, because I know sometimes in my past experience with libraries, we like to sometimes cordon off cordon off the different age groups. So
Right.
The, like the periodical section, it can be very far away from the children's section just because the, the old folks like to go sit, read their newspaper and they don't want to hear a thing. So are there any programmatic things like that that we should be thinking?
I, I think that's something, you, you, you bring in any archi, architectural firm worth its salt would take a look at the multi-function purposes and, and come up with the, a plan for that. So, you know, certainly things could be problematic during daytime, but as you move into the evening, if there is a cafeteria, gymnasium type of thing, you know, it, 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 it could have multi, multipurpose space. So.
Anyone else?
The, the, the last question I always kind of end with is, I've been asking a lot of questions, but are there questions that I haven't asked yet? Because usually there's something that's at the front part of your mind that I haven't talked about, but there's something that you folks might want to just get out there so where the, both the Howell Review Committee and Planning Board is aware of. And this isn't your, it's one and done. You guys can all, you know, I, I'm jealous of your audience size. We rarely get an audience for the Howell Review Committee. So I would certainly invite you folks, if there's anything else that comes to mind that you want to, to pipe up during our public comment. Certainly, the door is always open for you folks to come up and let us know anything. You have my email now, so I can also share that with the committee. But like I said, if there's any questions that you feel I haven't asked tonight, certainly bring them up now and I can certainly report back to them. And if not, if you don't have anything, then, great, you can email me if it comes up.
Sure. Just two things real quick. I know we talked about this before, but outside, way back, back in November, I think, but the, there is enough room there, right? I mean, you could, you could put a community center there. I don't, I don't know the boundaries over there, but it's a pretty big space, isn't it? I mean, there's room for, you could have like in one corner, one and one in the other.
So the, the, the total acreage on the property is forty, forty acres, plus or minus. A good chunk of that is wetlands. But there are areas where we can, I think, during one of our meetings with the town council, I was able to fit the high school, the elementary school, the library, two of the fire stations and the police station, all within the footprint of where the eleven standing buildings are right now. So there's room.
And, you know, the only other thing I was going to say was just, we don't know, again, we don't know. I shouldn't say we, of the, myself, don't know whether projections are going to, we, we see the projections that they're projections. We've seen, I've been on since like, on, on August 2012, and I've seen a lot of projections. And it's been kind of steady, but a li, a steady but kind of decline, but very small and mostly steady, physically steady. And what, I just want to point out that Halliburton was there and the school committee had the property and turned it over to the town. So I'll speak for myself, I think most of us aren't thinking of a new building that's not like on our forefront. It doesn't mean things couldn't change, but it would almost be a, you know, a dramatic change if it changed. Other than, again, the potential for the universal pre-K, which is, that's out of our hands. That's a, going to be done at levels above us. So we would just respond to that.
And, and really, what we've been tasked with town council as well is trying to, you know, with this master plan, it might be a 20-year plan for everything that, since we completed. We might be looking at three or four phases. But we want to make sure that if there is a need for an early childhood center or something of a school effect, that we lock that, that piece in place. So then that way, we don't have to go back and tear things up and redistribute utilities or redo parking. Or if there's one part that really gets, you know, worked on, we're, once it gets put in place, we're, we're, we're saving that space. So like, we're not going to put the community garden in one location and then be like, oh, sorry. We're going to move you to the, to the other side of the property now because we need to put it in this next building or something. We want to, we want to do this in a smart way with this master plan.
I just want to say thank you for trying to break down the silos. If you figure it out, please put us on, how you do it.
It's not an easy task. It takes some time, but you know, that's why I say you have my email. Please feel free to reach out to me. I, I'm always open to, to hearing comments and collaboration. Certainly the members of the planning board and the Howell Review Committee. We really want to make this a full town effort. Because that's the only way it's going to succeed is if everybody has the buy-in to, to do something good with that property. We're not just looking to, to do something just to do something. We're looking to really invest in our town with the Howell Review Committee. So that, that's, that's our angle. That's where we're, what we're working towards. And, you know, we're just really excited to be moving forward in, in how this is going to evolve. And really, please come to our meetings. They're going to get more excited with the architect on board. I can tell you, we're going to have great stuff to be looking at. So again, thank you all for taking the time to chat with me this evening. Thank you for all the, the efforts that you, you put forth this past couple of years with, with COVID and everything. Certainly, my son is thrilled that he's part of the school. He comes home with a smile on his face every day and the stuff he's learning, it just bothers my mind. It was not stuff I was learning in first grade. So, so thank you, thank everybody here as well for all the efforts. I really truly appreciate them all.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Moving on, move on to the consent agenda, item two. Anybody have any questions or concerns about the agenda?
Comments? Sure. So quickly, I just think that the, I really just want to commend the, our staff for the, on the school transportation contracts, the DAC or the way. Again, the idea of bidding with the combined towns and then in individual towns, you know, the contract with each, with DAC and the town, but bidding that's the combined forces with our neighboring communities. Good, it was a good idea. And I want to commend our staff for coming up with a, a good approach to transportation. I agree. Transportation costs, I should say. You know?
I want to hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Go move.
Motion should be made, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to the reports, superintendent.
I need a moment to see how to share my screen. There it is. Okay, we're going to do this. So Claire Ronald and I wanted to take a, a few moments to go over the updates to the district strategic plan. So just to break it down, the document that we're going to share is basically a smaller version of the entire strategic plan. This here is the RIDE strategic planning portal that we worked in at the district level and every school worked in at the school level. So we have district plans and school plans. So I'm just going to just touch on the district plan. And I'm being very kind with Peg Bada sitting here as far as this process was, was, was concerned. So the, the plan is basically the mission and vision, a theory of action, which is optional, so we didn't do it. The values, a needs assessment, and then the real need of it, it breaks down like this. At the top level, you have a priority. For each priority, there's a goal. For each goal, there's a series of initiatives. For each initiative, there's a series of action steps. And all tied into this are metrics and measurements and deliverables and budgets and links to research and such. So I don't want to tell you how much time we spent working on this thing, but it's pretty comprehensive. And Claire and myself, we're very proud of it. And we're very proud of what the school improvement teams have done at each building to create their plans. So I exported it and it came out looking terrible with a lot of things missing. So what I did, I reformatted and tried to add things into it to make something a little bit more digestible and comprehensive that we can post and we can share. So it's filled with pretty pictures. So at the top, the vision for the district, we just use the high school vision of the graduate because they did a lot of work in conjunction and concert with the elementary, the middle, all the way to the high school to identify those qualities a North Smithfield graduate would have. Effective communicator, lifelong learner, innovative thinking, healthy individual, responsible citizen. It's all described here. Our values, high standards, shared responsibility, mutual respect, inquiry, research, lifelong learning and community benefit, all described here. Again, we're just touching on these things. Needs assessment.
So we typically do this annually and especially for any plans that we're building. But we, we start with analyzing data and it always starts with the student achievement data. So we analyze the YCAS, SAT, PSAT access data. But we also have surveys within the district from the professional development advisory committee or professional development administrative surveys that we send, send out. We also have curriculum embedded assessments, we have interim assessments. We take all of that, we analyze the data and we can come up with priorities and some of that data is our survey. And so with all of that, we came up with four key priorities. key priorities, yeah, so our four key priorities are improving student achieve, achievement in English, language arts, and mathematics, decreasing subgroup achievement gap, and one of the subgroups in particular is our economically disadvantaged students in comparison to our non-economically disadvantaged students, and we have a pretty wide gap, and we're working on that, and it's embedded within the plan. Student, student health and engagement, as well as professional development, those are the four key priorities, and from there, we developed our goals. Oh, so the first priority, yes, is, is mine, and that is the first priority, high standards, quality instruction, curricula, and student success. We have our commitments, a lot of those we took from our previous strategic plan, um, we definitely felt like they were valuable and still articulated to share our priorities, and we began with our measurable goals, and so when we look at our measurable go- goals, we have a goal for English, language arts, for mathematics, and for science, and when we think of standards, curriculum, and achievement. And each goal has initiatives and action steps, those initiatives and action steps are very similar, um, from math to English, language arts to science, and so you will see that first and foremost, we wanted to improve student achievement. And then, how do we do that? We'll do that through high-quality curriculum implementation. Evidence-based instructional practices, assessment, and data analysis, and so we took those initiatives, and it looks a little bit different by, by academic area, but it is very, it is very similar. And, um, within that, we are building our MTSS system of supports, and that's the multi-tiered system of supports, we're partnering with Bridge RI, which Dr. Burns has helped establish that partnership, we're very grateful, and we're embedded it into our strategic plan, and so we're going to, you know, improve curriculum, improve instruction, ultimately improve student achievement, and reduce our gaps. All the details are in the back, I forget, I'll have to let you know.
So, yeah, it's, it's my fault, I go around with the camera at various times, and this picture was just so incredible, I had to recycle, I had, I had to share it. Safe and supportive schools, all right, our commitment is, uh, obviously, after COVID, uh, there's been a incre- a, a market change within our students as far as behavior, attendance, anxiety, uh, and we want our schools to be a safe place, we do not, it's not just that we don't want to tolerate bad behavior, but we want to get to the root and change it, and so, what, what, what we're moving and what, what's within this plan is an adjustment from a consequence punishment type of thing to a more restorative practices type of thing, so it's if a kid comes up with something incredibly racist, it's not just a detention or suspension, it's a, all right, let's get to the root. Why is this not appropriate? How are you affecting somebody else? You know, where, where's, where's this coming from? So, there's, we're looking at the, those three new positions, the dean of student support, student support coordinators, because right now, again, that whole behavior attendant discipline piece is just so occupying our principal and assistant principal and our teachers, and we really need somebody to focus in on that, whereas our assistant principal and principal will also be working with the behavior and the attendance, but can also focus more on the academics as well, because we have achievement gaps, we have priorities for English, math, science, we have a lot of changes and graduation proficiencies coming down from the Department of Ed. So, trying to balance that academic side with the social, emotional, behavioral side is just completely overwhelming for a couple of administrators in each building. So, and that's part of, of our initiatives over here, so our, we want the percentage of students' well-being, belonging, engagement, and safety. And again, we're taking this from survey works data, uh, to increase at least ten percent annually. I'd like to go, to go much higher, but we had to put in some unit of measure for this, uh, just to mention the Department of Ed, but within that is building these positive behavioral frameworks, positive attendance frameworks. And then, a, a whole thing around acceptance, understanding, and inclusion, so no one should feel uncomfortable in school or teased for their sexual orientation, their ethnicity, their religion, their socioeconomic group, I mean, so, and, and we have work to do around this area, which is all of these, again, we have a lot of students and families who are in pain or suffering, who are anxious, who are angry, who are lashing out, and we need to, to, to build those supports around it to modify that, those negative behaviors. Hey, quality staff.
There's a quick question, if I may, thank you, Chair, um, so superintendent, I just presumed that from what you were describing, like, uh, the issue of, say, you didn't use the term, but bullying, that would be addressed more or less, that would form the two, is that correct?
But one of the most important things that we do as leaders is recruit and retain high-quality educators. So, it's definitely our commitment, it's been our commitment, but we always want to extend and refine that. The, in order to recruit and retain our, our high-quality educators, um, we want to provide our faculty with professional development opportunities, um, mentoring, things, things of that nature. So when you look at our goals, and we have to find some metrics that go with it, so we're using some of our survey works metrics, um, but our first goal is the percentage of educator ratings on the domain of professional learning within the survey works will increase. You know, by service and every five, uh, every year for five years. And how will we make it increase? And that will be our first initiative, which is our new teacher induction program, so those are the teachers that are new to our district, they're not necessarily new teachers, they could be right out of college, but many could be coming from another district, but we want to bring them in and give them the support that they need in order to be successful, we do that with, we have mentor coordinators, and we have a robust mentor new teacher mentor system and structure that we're always trying to raise on. Part of that is doing community practice days, and so that would be a day where we meet with our new teachers and we visit other classrooms within the district, and not just at the grade level that they're teaching, but throughout the district, and so we would typically go to veteran teachers' classrooms and, and just look at the instruction and to showcase what does teaching and learning look like in North Smithfield, and really show, show folks what the bar is, but show that we're also there to support them, and we look for standards, are teachers teaching the standards, explicitly teaching the standards, are they using high-end back teaching strategies? Are they engaging students in the learning? And can we tell if they're developing relationships? And of course, this is usually typically our, our most veteran teachers who do this so incredibly well, but it's an incredible experience for our new teachers, and we are trying to expand that program. The next is variety of, offering a variety of professional development opportunities to our teachers, and so we have over the years, we just keep changing it up, and even when you hit goal, it only lasts for so long, I think people like, um, different opportunities over the years, but, um, we certainly have done, and will continue to do, hold district book studies, we also do implement, uh, professional learning, learning communities, and any teacher in the entire district has the opportunity to facilitate a professional learning community, um, before school or after school, um, and it's funded through a title, a Title II grant, just get professional learning units for that, and we have a variety. I can even begin to name the number of topics that, that we use with our professional learning community time. And also, we would like to continue to, uh, implement the community of practice days to include more veteran teachers, and we started that actually this year, but we typically would do that for our new teachers as a way to give them some experiences within the district of professional development, but we did find that our veteran teachers were actually seeking some opportunities out also, and so this year was the first year we had veterans, and I was the connect trace of the frontier, who actually went on a community of practice day as a veteran teacher this year, and, um, it's, it's an incredible experience, and so we're, we do plan on continuing and replying.
Number four, communication and community engagement, yes?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask a quick question, and I'm not sure it was in that section that you just referenced, I just, I can't read this, so, um, but I noticed the word learning walks, and I was just wondering exactly what that was, I think I know, but, so, a learning walk, and that's actually something that is a little bit new, and that we definitely walk in, you know, as administrators will take a, I would say, building walk, but there have been a little bit less formal than, um, in, in the past, and what we put into the strategic plan, it will be new for administrators next year, is that we will have learning walks where we'll have a protocol that we'll use, um, and that will be walking into classrooms, and teachers could participate in this also, but it would be a little bit more formal to see, you know, what standards are, are we teaching? Does, are we able to see the target that the teachers keep teaching, talking, talk about how a teacher engaged, and from that, compile the data in a way to identify what our strengths are, celebrate that and share that, but also maybe areas of improvement, and we can also, when we're implementing new curriculum, we can take, uh, administrators as well as teachers can participate in learning walks, so that will be new for our district next year, and we'll start the process next year, thank you.
Hey, communication, community engagement, Terry, this is your section, because I heard your voice in my head while I was putting it together. So, it, one of the things that we really pride ourselves with the schools is that we give back to the community or community resource. We try to promote that, we try to bring the community in, uh, certainly during COVID, it became difficult to bring in people from outside into the schools, but I, things, things are opening up. We have such incredible talent and diversity within the town, partnerships that we can be really cementing, uh, I mean, we, we do some really nice work with Richard Keane and the Heritage Association. We actually have a meeting, I think maybe tomorrow, with the partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, uh, in Lincoln Cumberland and Wood Socket. Again, just to, more opportunities for kids. The other thing is to really step up our communications to the parents, so we have, the schools are doing the newsletters, we, we have information that goes to administrative reports, that goes into your packet, but some of that stuff doesn't actually make it directly to the parents unless you go look for it, so want to get better with getting that out there. Initiatives and things that come from the Department of Ed, Terry, so there were a number of meetings throughout the state about the graduation proficiency requirements, and Terry asked me, well, did our parents know about it, and did they go to it? And outside of what was maybe in the Providence Journal, no, so that is something that I, 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 I took heart in, that, that's the kind of thing that we need to get out to the community if there's a, an opportunity for the community to impact not only what we do here in the schools, but also across the state. So, that's, that's the whole part of this, I'm not gonna go through each of these, it's, it's communication, it's, 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 it's the collaboration with the, with the town, with the community, with our parents, with the stakeholders for information, opportunities, advice, uh, and planning.
Ma'am, have we considered some of this information going into the town's newsletters? And also possibly including town meetings, because in the weekly newsletter, they list the town meetings, heritage board, budget committee, and so forth, the school committee is never listed, but if you go to NRI now, that's where we are.
Okay.
She, she puts our agenda there, but the town does not.
And we're not on a calendar either?
No. So if we can be a part of the town's newsletter, when something
Sure.
we want to share with the community, that be added to that?
Yeah, I don't see why not, okay.
Thank you.
And then the last section is effective responsive operation of facilities. I, I think our facilities have been doing remarkably well. We have so many renovations planned throughout the summer, and it's just ongoing, you, you saw the list of capital projects that we have coming up, uh, and it's just all to make our schools more attractive and conducive to working and learning, so quality work and learning environments, and, and again, I, I, I started to put together goals around budgeting and finance, and to make our decisions, I wanted to articulate our funding and financial decisions as being student-focused, we want the biggest bang for the buck on behalf of the kids. This platform took so much time and work that I didn't have it in me to create another goal, because every time we create a goal, it's hours of plugging in everything else. So, just know that it may not show up under a measurable goal, but it is part of each section, our commitments. So, again, so RIDE hasn't approved our plan yet, I submitted it a few weeks ago, I'm hoping they approve it, and all of this is for nothing, I'm assuming it's going to be checked off and approved. We're assuming it's going to be approved, once it gets approved, I can publish this out there. Meanwhile, our three schools have submitted their plans, which I know they would absolutely love to present those as well, once RIDE approves it. And to know that these initiatives and priorities that we put here at the district level, uh, they drill down deeper at the individual school level. They all work together.
Can I say something?
So, before you say something, here's the good thing about this, this platform. Is the fact that all of the districts have the ability to share it with each other. They, we all have the ability, and we're all aligning on certain measurements and goals, and so we can look at if a district is doing phenomenally well with, uh, English, language arts for socio-economically disadvantaged students, it shows we can take a look at their initiatives and their action steps and learn from them, contact them. The other thing is that all of this plugs into the funding and the grants and the finances and the other initiatives with the Department of Ed, so it is designed, and it is, and, and again, I was teasing and joking, there was, there, there was a bit of a building of the airplane while we're flying it, you know, but the plane took off and it, 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 it will be a smooth ride going forward, so this is a good day, all right, yes, Ms. Vada, you have.
And I will let you know that it's now, sort of, you know, it was built outside, the way things have to be done, we were very clear that we got the code to all of this, so now we actually have a greenhouse developer, so you've got a really, really solid All right, that is, that is making more changes every day than the vendor was making in six.
Right. And and the technical folks have been very receptive of our recommendations, suggestions. And there's been a lot of recoding and rebuilding and improvements continuously. So every year, when we go back to revise this, it's just going to get easier and easier and more comprehensive.
And it satisfies legislative request.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Let's move on to item five, full business, which could be the fiscal year 2023 operating capital budget. Please, if you have anything on that. Moving on to 24, operating capital budgets. We presented to the town council with the changes were recommended by superintendent. I thought we got a pretty good response, questions and everything. So I know that they will, they have voting on the budget next Monday. I'll probably just follow up with the letter similar to the one I sent, just saying this is, you know, this is what we need. Now, Superintendent, do you want me to ask for now, I want me to go back and say, no, it's not 1%, it's 2% because we have to do the first and second grade or the.
An additional kindergarten.
Right. Do what you feel you want to do and we'll just make everything.
I'll get run, I'll get run right out of the town. No, but we did, we did make an argument that one that we were looking for 1%, even though we were fully funded by the state. With with some changes.
You could ask Ms. Dano and Ms. Lefernier over there to not make elementary school such a good place. Yeah.
Wow.
So so it's
Well, you know, that's a good thing. Ultimately. Anybody have any questions on the budget?
Do we have a definite date that we're needing to approve the budget? Yeah. Okay. Next Thursday.
Last year, you weren't able to make it and Jean ran the meeting and it was a all-time record of fast, efficient meetings.
I'm definitely coming. All right. All right. Moving on to new business, six, 23, 24, teacher recalls.
So I believe you have a list in your packets and we want these people back, please, if you can approve it.
I'm going to motion to approve the teacher recalls as listed. It's in the agenda. So moves, moves we made is your second.
Second.
Second. Happy we're able to bring back the people we happy able to.
We we still have some outliers.
Yep.
You know, working on them as quickly as possible. So they're they're largely with the non-tenure teachers. They 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 fall under a different process based on contractual obligations.
Right. Ball of favor?
Aye.
Ball opposed, yes. Moving on to executive session, I'm going to motion to go to executive session on the Rhode Island General Law is 4246581 job performance of the superintendent and administrators. Motion to be made to your second.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Chair Lombardi?
Yes.
Ma'am? Yeah. Mr. Cunnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Vada?
Yes.
Mrs. Vada, yes.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'm going to pause the recording and I'm going to shut off the video and the audio.
Stay here.
You can stay here if the rest of you would like to not stay here.